All right, it is three o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting or I guess it's a workshop actually. I'm calling the workshop. So, informally, our district attorney Anthony Pierce is here.
The only person with a tie?
Supervisor Tinko is here.
Cut it off.
Supervisor Byner is here. Supervisor Guy is here. Supervisor Flaherty is here and our district manager, Mr. Schumacher, is here. And I think we'll start with the plaid duty allegiance and then go into the workshop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Chris, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
We have a workshop today on assessment methodology and following that, a presentation on stormwater utility formation and that kind of dovetails in from assessment methodology and looking at the water management portion of that on impervious surfaces. And this meeting was advertised in the news press on May 2nd. And we also sent notices to all homeowners associations and the property owners associations, be it an email to let them know about the meeting. And we'll open the meeting today. Russ Wires here. He's been here on a couple of different occasions to talk about this and he's here to give us an update on where he is in developing an updated assessment methodology for the district's operations and maintenance budget. Russ?
Hi, I'm Mike. Good afternoon, board members. Thanks for having me back again. Much further along than we were before, of course. I still don't have the final assessments yet because I don't have the budget and I'm still working on some of the data which I did into. But this will definitely give you the idea. Again, I don't have the budget yet this coming year. However, this will show you how we will get there in detail. So, pre-prepare, I have printed some slides I've got. Okay?
Do we have, are they available here on paper?
They're printed out. I didn't bring it out. We haven't do that. Hey, Steve?
Okay, what's the problem?
Do you have it on your screen?
Yeah, we make it.
I brought out a copy. I'll have to copy it.
I'll pull copies. Thank you. Wait, we took those ones. Wait till you get your hard copies.
How about for us?
Wait till you get your...
Oh, you're part of the team?
No, wait till you get your hard copies.
35 seconds?
You want me to wait till you get your hard copies? I think, let me, because I'm gonna go...
Go slow.
I wanna, I really wanna go back in and review the old methodology just again so you do understand why we are changing it.
Okay.
And that's the first part of the presentation, so that you may or may wanna add notes to. It's a reiteration of basically what I've done before. So, let me start here. On page two, which is up there right now, if you're okay. This is, the outline would be, I'm gonna talk about the background a little bit, the current situation and the methodology, how we got there, of course, the determination of the benefit again. And then I'm going to talk about the budget analysis, how we're gonna categorize it, and also the split of administrative costs to the enterprise fund, Pelican Preserve, and Gateway. We had those 70, 30, 20 percents going forever. I went and did some research on those, I'll get into that in a little bit, find out where they came from, and find them. But I have a way that I can do measure, which is a good way of measuring what that split truly should be. Then, I'm gonna talk about the development mix a little bit, and that's the determination of Pelican Preserve, Arborwood Phase Three, and Worthington, who don't have any connection via roads within the community, and how to analyze determining them. Then, the golf course and the other lake parcels. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the LEHOL parcel, which is pretty simple. Then I wanna go through the analysis and show you truly, and I have examples in each time, so you'll get an idea of how it works by trip generation, then how we do the water management part, how we do the parks, recreation, soccer complex, and the administration, and how that gets split. And then, we'll take all of those and we add them together so we see what the final assessment is, and I have an example of that as well. Not the true number yet, but this is giving you an idea of how we get there, because again, I don't have the budget for this coming year. And I will tell you the other issues I've had with the data of trying to go through 9,000 parcels. But we're almost there. So, let me go back through the background a little bit. Again, the methodology was used, it was a ratio of benefits between the residential acreage and the commercial acreage when it was originally done. The primary factor was the determining the extent of the water management system, because at the time, there were no roads, there was none of that. It was basically a water management issue. So, they didn't have any other items that they needed to distribute from a benefit standpoint. And we said, when the commercial office, what they did is, is back, they were doing it over a 500 acre, or 800 acre, I'm sorry, like a thousand acres in total, showing that on the commercial, they had 207 acres, 151, they had a .73 impervious, and...
Are we supposed to be seeing something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're editing this a lot.
I'm sorry. Quick. There, can you see it?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Thank you, sorry. I was reading mine and didn't click with that one, so I would say, I'll let you know next page. And originally, the ratio of the residential to commercial was five, on a per acre basis, 5.79. So, the commercial was impacting it at a 5.79 rate versus a residential acreage. That was done over 30-some years ago, back in the mid-'80s, when the district was started in 1986, when they set this up. And it was meant for that purpose at that time. However, it also said that about every five years, it should be revisited, because as the development changes, the methodology is going to change. And it had never been revisited. It had never been changed. So, we're working today with a methodology that's 30 years old. And therefore, what is a true benefit, which I will get into in a minute, are you really receiving a true benefit of the road based on a water management methodology? Are you really getting the true benefit of the administrative costs, or the parks and recreation, and all of those things, based on this methodology that was, again, that was based on a methodology of water management? So, that's why I was brought in to take a look at this. I do these all over the state, and I actually do some pretty big ones as well. The same thing, in looking at the true benefit. We do it for debt, and we also do it for operations and maintenance. They're very parallel in the way they're done. In the next slide, please, Chris. At the time, it was the most reasonable methodology that I mentioned. It was also used for, we used it for the Lake Bank restoration that we did, was it last year? Last year, I guess, or was it last year before last year? A year before, it was two years. Because it was water management related. And it made sense at that time, before we got into the real in-depth of what this methodology will be. So, we used it, Lake Bank, and it was adopted, and it was still viable methodology, again, because it was focused, it was on water management. But additional budget line items have been added as the district has grown, which is just, I went through a little bit ago here. Now, there's a two-pronged leanability test for ballot assessments, and let's first review those two tests. Next slide, please. Click one. There's a special peculiar benefit that you get from that. So, if you're using a road and your benefit is based on water management, you're not really measuring that true benefit. To me, the use of a road would be, I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can do it. You can measure the front of a lot, you can measure the front of your parcel, it can be the number of cars you have there. But what I always like to use, and a lot of what has proven to be very well liked, is the trip generation that are generated from certain types of products. I will get into that in a little bit, because the Institute of Traffic Engineers has a significant database when it comes to number of trips that come from a single-family home, and a number of trips that come from a multi-family home, and a number of trips that come from... They get really down into detail, and I'll show you an example of that. And that will be the basis of what we will use on the benefit of the road that you get. And, click to the next one, please. Is it fairly and reasonably apportioned? And I'll show you the calculations and how we get there. So, based on the benefit or the use of the road, or the use of the water management system, that's where the special peculiar benefit comes in. That's what we're measuring, so that you will see that, hey, I use the road X number of times a day based on this, on the study. And there's a lot of variations between that. But this is the best way we know of, besides doing 7,000 homes and each car. I mean, it would be insane to try and do that. So, we're trying to show the special peculiar benefit, however, we can't get into the real, real minutia, but we're taking it to the next level of detail. Next slide, please. The special peculiar benefit, operations and maintenance of the systems accrue in different amounts and are dependent on the type of land used receiving that special benefit, which is what I've been explaining before. And if you go into the fair and reasonable, which is the next, please. Click it twice. Yeah, hold on, I had it nicely set up, so you can... And that's the duty to pay, the not ad valorem special assessment. Should be fairly and reasonably apportioned. And that's, I will show you how it gets calculated, once you take the trips into account, and once you take the pervious versus the impervious surface of the property, so that takes care of the water management, and then will take care of the equivalent residential unit when it comes to administrative costs and those sort of things. When you calculate them all out, it is, becomes fairly and reasonably apportioned at that time. Okay, next slide, please. Remember that two-pronged leanability test, and I wanted you to remember these, because the original methodology meant that the two-pronged test for ballot assessments, in that the properties at the time were receiving a water management benefit, and that was it. So, it was the proper way to measure it. However, going forward, when we've added, when we added the new items to it, which has been done, well, it was done early on, actually, the new methodology, and, well, they weren't, first of all, it wasn't meet the leanability test, when you added line items such as roads, administration, landscape, parks, recreation, public safety. The new methodology will review each of these line items in the budget and determine that special peculiar benefit which will go to each of the properties based on this. The next, next slide, please. Budget analysis. Okay, you can click on both of those. We had the categorization. First of all, what I have to do in the budget for analysis, what we need to do is categorize this to show the true benefit, because landscaping is just out there, and it's hard to measure landscaping for a fairly and reasonably apportionment without, as an independent piece. So, what we did, and what we're going to do, is go back, for instance, all the landscaping that is within the roadways, that's being maintained within the roadways, will be measured, will be added to the roadway, so when roadway budget that I'm going to use, trip generation and all of that, will have the landscaping portion of that budget, that takes care of the roadways, included in it. So, that, we will do that. The commons and soccer complex will include the portion of the landscape budget that applies, I said not applies to roadway landscaping, that applies to the common and soccer complex. So, that's how we will split the landscaping up. The, okay, go to the next one, if you please. Under the general fund number one, we have, I should take all four of them, three, four. That's where your four categories are. You have the roadways and related landscaping, you have the water management, you have the common, soccer complex, and related landscaping. And then we have the portion of the administrative cost, which is the 70, 20, and 10 apportionment that will come back, because we have administrative costs that go to enterprise fund and then the two general funds. So, that get, that, the portion of the administrative cost that goes to general fund will be in, general fund one, will be in the general fund one assessment.
Russ, you might indicate that the roadways is inclusive of the streetlights?
Yes.
Street signs?
Yes.
Sidewalks and the, what was it? Street signs, streetlights, sidewalks?
Road sidewalks.
I guess that's it.
Yeah, kinda the street furniture.
Anyway, anything that's associated with the road right away.
Correct. Going to, going, kinda to the next one. Come on down. I'm sorry, could I, I shouldn't just, again, the roadway, streetlights, where there's water management. Okay, go into, next one. Next one. So, under Pelican Preserve, they get their lump sum once the budget is done. It's set over there, they have, go ahead and click the three on that. Their operational costs, which is specific to Pelican Preserve, their water management was, which is specific to there, and it's shown in your budget, and also the portion of the general administrative costs that we talked about, the 70, 20, 10. That gets split, put over on the general fund two side. Now, go to the next one. This is the one I wanted to talk about first. Next slide, please. Come on down. Put them all in there. Right now, under the administrative costs, the split analysis, it was currently split, whoop, you went too far, backwards. There you go. The administrative are currently split 70 percent to enterprise fund, 20 percent to gateway, and 10 percent to Pelican Preserve. And, oh, good.
I'll have to mark those.
Thank you. And when I went to take a look at...
Thank you.
Thank you. I know. It's actually better. It's better than the top. Back, one more. Keep going. It was split 70, 20, and 10. And what we were looking at that point, it is, must have been some sort of best guess estimate, that said 70 percent of the fund is going to administrative for the enterprise fund, and then 20 percent to gateway, and 10 percent to Pelican Preserve. There was no backup. Even when I went into the budget documents, and I had the budget documents in Excel, those numbers were hard numbered. The, actually, the 70 percent was, and then the 20 and 10 also were hard numbered in there. So, this was done, you guys were on board. It was in place already. I couldn't find any backup or analysis of how those percentages were derived in the records. So, the percentages were hardcoded into budget worksheets, again, prior to Infomarc. And so, I went back, and I thought the best way to do this, and I had acquired and had received the actual time that people do put into the different funds and the different areas that they go to, which I thought would be the best way to figure out how to split those administrative costs up. So, we go to the next slide now. Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Payroll time sheets were the best indicator. The spreadsheet provided by the accounting department here is showing the staff time as it relates to the enterprise fund and the general funds. So, it was, instead of 70 percent, it was more like 59 percent that went to the enterprise fund, and then 41 percent went to GF1 and GF2. So, taking that, I had to split that 41 percent, and had to have a good backup for doing that. Can you go to the next slide, please? Now, the administrative costs have been split 67 percent to gateway and 33 percent. Remember, the remaining 33 percent are split 20 and 10. There is a good justification for this split. Both the acreage and the ERUs for both areas show actually that same percentage split. So, there is good validation for having those, the 20 percent and the 10 percent, or the one, I'm sorry, two-thirds to one-third, because now I'm gonna take that 41 percent and make it two-thirds and one-third. Next slide, please. So, you can see, by the acreage, it was 33.08, and by the ERUs, it was 33.32 percent for Pelican Preserve. And for gateway, it was 66.92 and 66.68. So, the two-thirds, one-third is valid. I think it's very reasonable to use.
So, Russ, you decided not to go back and use the methodology that got you to the 59 and 41?
No, I'm using the 59, 41.
Well, no, but then when you split the 59...
Split the 41.
Split the 41. I mean, the 41. You didn't, you used a different methodology than you got to splitting the 59, 41. Does my understanding correct? In other words, you didn't, you didn't go back to payroll, you know...
To the payroll time.
The payroll time sheets and all of that stuff to split the 41, is that right?
Correct, correct. And I would have to probably go back and try and split that even further on the payroll. We were trying to drive specifically, how do we split the enterprise fund?
Enterprise from the...
Yeah. And I thought the other way to say it, it was very reasonable with the two-thirds, one-third. And it made sense. On acreage, it made sense on ERUs. So, if you go to the next slide, you'll see, it comes out to 27 percent goes to the GF1 and 14 percent goes to GF2. So, that would be the new split of those administrative costs. I think it's fairly, fair and reasonable, and we have good backup now that backs that up to show how to split those things up. Next slide, please.
Russ, I could make a quick, real quick. The copy you sent me late, late last night, that's the same with what the board, what you had today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I wanna make sure, because I just don't have mine dated 58, which is sort of ridiculous. Russ is dated 59, not the screen, but it's 58. Same document?
It's the same document.
Okay.
Yeah.
Typo or something.
And the foundation of this formula is based on what a surface and ERUs?
No, it's based, first of all, it is based on time, where the administrative time is spent. What I was trying to figure out is how much was administrative time spent in the enterprise fund, which is utilities, and then how much of that staff time was spent in the general fund? So, roughly, if you wanted to, it would be 60 percent, 40 percent. 60 percent was in the enterprise fund, 40 percent was in the general fund, where they were using 70, 30 before. But then, we have a good basis for it. We have, in today, in today, basically, that's what, that's how the time is being spent at the moment. So, we're gonna take those administrative costs, 60 percent will go to the enterprise fund, and then the 41, 40 percent will be split 27, 14.
You might indicate that's projected 2019 numbers on the payroll, correct, Mike?
Well, that's projected 2020.
2020.
That's for the...
2020. So, it's up to date. If we'd have done this a year or two ago, had less employees in enterprise, that number would have dropped down, where I had originally said, suggested maybe a year ago, 55, 45. It's gone up a little bit, because we've retained new enterprise personnel.
Yeah. And that could, we have the basis now, we can always go back and revisit it if we need to, but the basis is there now, I think is, and it's a very valid methodology to get to those splits. Next slide, please. The analysis of Pelican Preserve and Arborwood Phase Three and Worthington parcels. Now, these parcels, if you know on a map, are not connected directly via roadways. They sit out and are independent of that. If you're in Pelican Preserve, you gotta drive around to get here. If you're in Arborwood, you have to do the same thing in Phase Three. And then also, with the Worthington parcel, which is just past the entryway here to the east on Daniels Road. And that doesn't have an internal connection as well. Pelican Preserve, I, you know, according to my methodology, I mean, it's been going along that way, I really, I think it's fair and equitable that, you know, they don't use the roads and they don't use the parks and recs, so their budget has been primarily water management and with some administration involved with it from the district. And the assessment determination, I'll discuss that a little further. Basically, we're gonna keep it the same for the most part. I'm changing the commercial a little bit, but the residential part, you know, it's one per, and they've been used to that. And with it, when you look in the grand scheme of things, we're still fair and reasonable within, and within the lean parameters and all of that, the special peculiar benefits. So, I think we're okay with that.
So, in essence, we're keeping rule five, but we're tweaking it for Arborwood Phase Three and Worthington.
Correct.
Rule five or six?
Five.
Seven or six?
Whatever. That rule.
The bunch of costs of your... That old... The budget rule.
Yeah, that rule.
Yeah. That was one of 2006.
2005.
The next, the next parcel we'll talk about is Arborwood Phase Three, and most of you hopefully know where that's at. It's located there on the western boundary, where the CDD boundary heads to the west. It goes north into the west right at that corner. They're within the district, but they're not connected. They actually, they have no access to the gateway community, so it really does not benefit from this road, parks, and recreation like Pelican Preserve. Its water management system flows into the Pelican Preserve water management system. It doesn't flow into the gateway system. So...
What are possible? Is that possible, what you just said?
It's the only way it'll go.
The only way it'll go.
It's the only way it'll go. It goes over past the south end of Vistoya into the wetland barrel after the fifth hole and the golf course. So, it all goes into the Pelican Preserve.
That goes a big way, though? Yeah. Chair, I'm sorry, if you have a question, I may ask a question about that. Russ, on parks and recreation, Pelican Preserve is still a 55-plus acreage restricted community, correct? So, from the standpoint of the soccer complex, which is primarily used by youth, I can see why there's the arguably not a basis for assessing Pelican Preserve. Arborwood has no restriction. Worthington, if it's developed as a residential, would not have such restrictions. So, I guess, I'm not sure, it's a question as to whether or not you can totally say that they do not benefit from parks and recreation.
In that case, if they're benefiting from it, then they get a benefit from the road to get...
Regardless of whether they're connected or not.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that. That's what I'm saying. They would have to come around and through the gateway road to use it, is another point. Whether we put a minuscule amount on it, I mean, what's your question?
This is the cleanest way of doing it, without raising up the whole issue of interconnectivity, which is, my opinion, is weak as hell, but just go with it this way. When they build, I think the idea was, is when they build, if they wanna use our facilities, then they're gonna pay. If they don't, they don't.
Well, he's talking about Arborwood, you're talking about...
Arborwood Phase Three is, with them staying over there in that Arborwood development, having all amenities that are second to none, they ain't coming here. They have no reason to come here. Now, the kids may come over and play soccer, but we let everybody else in here, so that doesn't make any difference. Worthington, I don't know what they're going to do. I would guess that they would wanna be here and use the facilities, but it's still the point, they gotta use Daniels to get here.
But again, it depends on what they're going to develop there. My current recommendation is, it's not connected, but it will also not benefit the district rules, park, and recreation. Maybe, maybe not. Until it is developed, we really can't determine its benefits.
Yeah, that can be done, a year, when they come in with a plat, then we revisit this the first opportunity.
Exactly.
That's the only way to do it.
And here's the good news about this, if once we get the methodology in place, we can always add to it. And when we add to it, it's all set up that it'll redistribute and reapportion the benefit when we add something new to it. You're just adding more ERUs, you're adding more trips to the road from somebody else that's being split up a little bit easier. It's a little easier to do. And who knows? They may, because they're a vacant parcel, but they may come in and they may want to use the parks and recs, because they have kids there. I mean, and then, if that's the case, and say, yeah, we wanna do it, well, then you're gonna be assessed for it. And that discussion can happen when they, when they come into what they're going to be doing in terms of development. So, in the meantime, we need to leave that parcel as a vacant parcel, like any other vacant parcel in gateway, and I'll show you how we calculate their benefit. They just fall into that category until such time that you know what they're gonna develop. So, those are the, the analysis of the three properties that are outside, or that aren't connected, they're in the district, but they're not connected from a roadway perspective. So, any questions on that? Next. We have the determination of the 15 parcels that you asked me to take a look at as well is still ongoing at this time. One of the examples, and I'm still, I'm doing a little bit of research, I kind of, a little bit of research on my own to figure out some of these things, because sometimes it's hard to get information. One of the examples is that former sales facility in the Pelican Preserve Town Center. It's part, when we look at it from district perspective, it's a golf course parcel and was assessed accordingly. It is not, at one time, it might have been the driving, who knows what that parcel was. So, I think it should be considered to be developed as a commercial parcel and assessed as the other developed commercial parcels within and next to Pelican Preserve, because the analysis of them is a little bit different. Remember, they're not on our enterprise fund, so they don't have the benefit of that. When you look at what, how I do the determination of the commercial, for instance, the commercial really isn't impacting our roads, per se, like an office building here where everybody's driving here. They're outside of it. So, I have a different way of measuring them, and I think the same way with their vacant commercial parcels are measured a little differently because of those implications of not being connected via roadway. And I will get into that in a minute to show you how we're going to do it.
So, it will end up being treated differently than the rest of the town center? Is that correct?
No, 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 no. That whole town center will be treated the same.
Okay.
But that parcel was not being treated as a commercial piece. But it needs to be, because it's within a commercial piece, and who knows what they're going to do with it, but it is commercial.
I think it's made up of two straps as I recall.
I believe so.
Two separate straps.
Yeah.
It will eventually be part of the town center.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's just case.
It's the town center. It's in the town. And it will be, it will be transferred from Lenore to the.
To the residence.
To the residence and to the town center.
Without cost.
Without cost at the time that they, that they vacated.
Correct. But it's gonna have to be treated as a commercial and get its assessment accordingly, as opposed to being treated as a golf course parcel. So, and really, I mean, that cleans that, that particular area, but we have some other ones out there. I mean, the commercial ones that are along Colonial, and some of them are developed, some of them aren't. You also have the one, the one that I'm doing a little bit more research on is the, the storage area, how do we handle that? Because that still is a part of the, a golf course assessment, and it's not a part of the golf course. So I'm going to do those in detail to make sure that we have them categorized correctly, and it gets its appropriate benefit and special benefit that it needs.
Isn't the definition of a commercial property a revenue, generally a revenue-producing property? And the sales center does not necessarily produce any revenue and won't, unless it has its character changed.
Which one again?
The sales center.
Sales center.
The whole town center.
Town center's not a revenue-producing.
Yeah.
It's like Sherman cop, soccer complex. You have baseball, you have tennis, it's not a commercial thing.
It's almost like an institution that you start to get laid.
It's like a big park.
The whole town center?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we ought to consider making it like the Lee Memorial Health System parcel.
But the issue.
That's your choice. That's, that's the board's choice.
See, that's the issue on the rental storage, I'm assuming that somebody is getting money for those vehicles parked in that storage facility over there.
Right, and that's why.
Just like we would have here, people getting charged. The question is, is that an assessable deal because it belongs to the CDD? I think that's the issue. The one over there, I'm sure is going in WCI's pockets.
It's a private.
It's private.
Yeah.
This one we're talking about here is CDD.
And generally, if you don't.
It's not considered a commercial or governmental operation.
Correct.
A governmental operation such as the soccer complex and RV facility would not be considered a commercial operation.
Right, it's a government entity.
Governmental operation.
Right.
And that's basically what our town center.
Yeah, yeah.
It's privately owned, that's.
Towed by the residents.
What it sounds like you're saying is, is that the, what is now the sales center is gonna become a part of the town center.
Yes.
And will no longer be a commercial.
When the last lot is sold, that's exactly what's gonna happen. But the philosophy on the town center is what's concerning, because that is a nonprofit, resident-owned, resident-encumbered facility, or will be very soon. So it should be treated like, I mean, the Lee Memorial or Sherwood, for my money.
But they don't, they don't have that same status under law, they're not a governmental body. And that's the key difference.
Owned and operated by residents, that's not governmental body?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. Maybe we need to.
We'll take that later.
Maybe you need to.
How, how is that difference from the Sherman Soccer?
It's not governmental.
The Sherman Soccer is governmental.
Pelican Preserve Community Association is a non, is a Florida not-for-profit corporation. It is not a public entity, such as Lee Health, which is a special district, such as.
So it's not for profit, it's not.
Doesn't mean that the nonprofit status is not created as a public entity because of that. A public entity via City of Fort Myers, all the facilities.
But that doesn't mean it has to be recognized as commercial.
It can be, depending, the board can make a determination as to whether or not particular activities qualify residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, or however they want, or public. I mean, I think, I haven't even seen the term institutional used at times for certain opportunities.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
And then the board can classify, make a determination as to how various uses are of impact. For example, one thing Russ was talking about is impact on the facilities, which shows the benefit and whether it can be trip generation, but I guess the counter to that argument might be that all the activities occurring at that town center will be the property owners who exist already within the community paying their assessments.
Right.
I mean, that's one argument, possibly.
And on the stormwater side, it's way off, because it's certainly not a golf course that's rated.
Right.
You look at the grass, and you're looking at maybe point two on runoff coefficient. That one's nowhere near point two.
Right.
It's probably point seven five, point eight, or even higher, because it's all rooftop and blacktop.
Now, now.
So that, that further complicates the, the issue.
I, I actually, I think it cleans it up a little bit.
Just for stormwater.
Because you're just for stormwater.
Yeah, just for.
That's what it's for, and then we're looking at pervious versus impervious. So how I would, well, what will impact that is what is the calibration of the commercial versus the single family, or the residential unit? And I will show that in a minute, how I was calculating that for Pelican Preserve. So, so you'll get an idea as to, and I did it as an equivalent residential unit on a per acre basis.
Yeah, and I guess one other aspect, we talked about uses, is at times if you have a private facility, such as a property owner, master association-owned amenity, such as a town center, and you have a restaurant, and you have the restaurants open to the public as a whole, you may have that at times. Some places do that to keep generation, revenue generated.
Yeah.
What is that piece? Yeah, and sometimes. Again, that, that would fall into like a commercial sort of enterprise, even though it's.
Governmental, I agree.
Your, your restaurants are open to the public, right?
I think the golf course restaurants are.
Absolutely not.
I thought they were, no?
No.
They no longer are. Uh-huh, okay.
They only do.
But golf course is all they got to do.
They only do that.
I don't mix that up with them.
But we only do that by membership, or if they have a special event, they're.
But when you get purely the amenities, it really isn't anything different than Stony Brook adds on a much smaller scale. Stony Brook adds their bar, they have their soccer, they have their baseball, they have their tennis courts, they have the swimming pool, and they have a clubhouse. So the two are somewhat town center, and yet, except for the restaurant, they're essentially the same.
And is Stony Brook currently a commercial?
It's not built.
Oh.
It's currently big. So anyway, I will get into, actually, I'll get into a little bit of detail on Pelican Preserve, so you understand how, how that will work. And, and again, we're, we're doing the commercial over there a little bit differently than we do here, because we have, there's, there's a little bit more impact over here than what you have over there, because you're just strictly looking at the water management primarily and the portion of the administrative costs. Let's go back. Next, if you would please. You have to click somewhere, because I did these. Here we go. Now, here's your method of allocation for Pelican Preserve. Look at their, over there, like you have had it, you've had it done, one ERU, equivalent residential unit, per residential unit. Now, on the vacant commercial and vacant residential parcels, what's left, that's not planted, will be assessed a portion of an ERU per acre based on their de minimis benefit. In other words, in a case like that, vacant property flow is roughly twenty percent into a lake, or, you know, so like eighty percent is pervious. So twenty percent flow, there's, oh, there's a flow on every piece of land, it's not a hundred percent, okay, so. But, and I have studies that show twenty percent, and I'll show you an example of it coming up in a minute, one of the studies that shows that. They would receive one-fifth of an ERU per acre on a vacant commercial, because of that, they're twenty percent, it's water management related. So they would get that. Now, commercial will be given an ERU per acre number based on the average number of units per acre in the rest of Pelican Preserve. So what we'll do is we'll say, we have, how many units over there roughly?
Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one thirty-six.
Okay, just for simplicity, let's say it's, it's only six hundred, calculated six hundred acres, something like that. So you're, you're about four units per acre on a density basis. So what, what I'm saying, on a commercial, we'll be given an ERU per acre based on that average number of units per acre in the rest of Pelican Preserve. Example, if there's on average four units per developable acre in Pelican Preserve, or per acre, then the developer commercial would receive four ERUs per acre for their assessment. Very simple, very clean, it's water management related, takes care of the flow, just like, like you're doing. So that would be the easiest way of taking care of their assessment. And that way we're taking care of it, because I really can't do the trip generation part on that or any of that stuff, because it's not related to roads, or anything, it's the water management.
But it still comes back to if something is rated commercial.
Yes.
What you said, Bob.
Still refers back to if, if, like the town center, becomes commercial.
So the town center.
If we find, you know, a hybrid term that will differ, it may be treated differently than commercial.
And, and we can add another category if that's so decided to be done. Right now, if it was commercial, it would be four units, you'd get four ERUs per acre, is what your assessment would be.
All we're trying to measure is, is the rainwater runoff, is that?
Yes.
Was this perfect?
Yes. Yep. And, and the, you know, the four units per acre, I mean, I'm looking at residential, and really, it would be a higher, it would be a higher ERU per unit, or per acre, because the reality of it is, in a single-family home, it is roughly forty percent impervious, plus you take their additional percentage of runoff, there'd be say fifty percent. Well, commercial can be upwards of eighty percent with the blacktop and everything else, so four might be a little bit light, but we have time to adjust that.
But those fifteen or twenty commercial properties at the intersection of.
Colonial, Tree Line.
Tree Line and Colonial.
Yeah.
Those will be counted individually based upon their actual.
Acreage.
Acreage and impermeability ratio, because they're basically a hundred percent, they're in anything but rooftop, blacktop, any grass.
That's what I'm getting at. Right now, I mean, I'll have to go through and measure each one of them, but there's not, there's not a lot of parcels to measure, but I can do the actual percent impervious and then, and calibrate an ERU for each of them, based on that, so. But that, that I think takes care of Pelican Preserve, and makes it, he's kind of keeping it the same as it has been, but we, the two keys to that whole thing, three keys, vacant commercial, what is the, how regular commercial is, and what is a commercial parcel versus?
I know you're, I think you're gonna get into it, but, but the problem that I ran into when I was analyzing Pelican Preserve, we only have one rule in Gateway, and that is five point eight times the acreage times the equivalent residential rate.
Correct.
That's what we have right now. But that's not what's being done in Pelican Preserve. Those units over there get five point eight multiplied times the square footage divided by forty-three, five, sixty, times the residential rate, times forty percent. Why they have been discounted, I don't know, Stephen knows, or who knows? I have no idea, there is no records whatsoever in the minutes of all the way back to eighty-six to explain how they.
Well, they're pensioners, they're all pensioners, didn't you agree?
I'm sorry?
The pensioners, they need a break.
Moving very long.
Your mouth was moving, Bob, but I didn't hear anything. The issue is, is that, that is a problem. We only have one rule, and it's gotta be applied equally to all commercial users.
Well, I think, and those commercial users, remember, they're, they're outside of the enterprise fund, so we're, that's one thing, they're not connected.
Yeah, they have nothing to do with enterprise.
Correct. But, and they're not connected to our work, so, you know what I'm saying?
I'm talking about purely stormwater, stormwater management.
They, just like we're gonna do here, I'm gonna have to measure each of the commercial properties.
Agreed.
And I will give them, you know, right now, that's one way of doing it, but that's on an average of four units per developable acre, it could be five or six units per develop.
Yeah, but the problem is now, is when we multiply that, five point eight times the acreage, it is inclusive of the one rate we have for residential.
Right.
When we get done, we're gonna have four rates for residential, we could pull the stormwater component out and multiply that times, and then we're good. That's fair.
Ed, are you saying that the residents over there are now paying a part of the stormwater component? Okay, right.
No. The, the amount that you, when you do your division, and divide your thirty-three ninety-seven, or whatever the number is, into your total cost, it comes up eight eighty-three, or whatever that number is. In Gateway, that number was six fifty-one, or six seventeen, something like that. With Gateway, six seventeen is multiplied times the commercial acreage, times five point eight. Over there, you take your rate, multiply it by forty percent, then multiply times five point eight in the school, the acreage. In other words, they're factored, they're subsidized by the residents over there to the tune of forty percent.
Who, who is it subsidized? I'm, I'm missing something.
You residents are picking up the tab in the tune of over a quarter of a million dollars.
For who?
Those twelve, fifteen commercial properties.
Okay.
Yeah. Have been for years.
Anyway, we'll. That's why we're.
We made your.
No, that's not right.
Anyway, that's, that's where we're at. I will have to go through, just to finalize on Pelican Preserve, I will take a look at each of the commercial parcels, and we'll come up with an equivalent ERU for each of those based on their pervious versus impervious. And the rest of it's pretty much self-explanatory. And, but I'm gonna talk about the golf course in relation to the golf course here as well, because they really need to be treated the same. Next slide please. I wanna talk about the, the methods of allocation, and I know we've touched on this in the past. There, remember for, for the roadways, I, and I, and the last time I did the presentation, remember when I, I talked about roadways, there were like four or five different ways we can measure it. I think trip generation is the best, because that really shows the best use of those. Water management is the percentage of pervious versus impervious surface on net developable acres. We'll use the, now, one of the things to make it easier, so I don't have to, so we don't have to have sixty-seven or seven thousand individual assessments, we wanna try and, I mean, it can get down to that kind of a detail. What I'm going to do is, I'm gonna use the impervious versus impervious of the, each neighborhood. So for instance, Mohawney Run North will have one, Gateway Greens will have another, but I'm gonna use the average of that, because they're, they're all pretty close, when you look within the developments, all the units are pretty close to being the same. So I'm gonna take the average of all those. And what I will do is, which has, which has been part of my exercise recently, and it took me five days, eight hours a day to calibrate the data that I got from the property appraiser's office with our tax or assessment rule. But now it's calibrated, but there they have, they have the GIS acres of the parcel, and then they'll have, I'm talking single families, you have GIS, there's a measurement for each single-family home, there's a measurement for the total build that, that's built, that includes driveways, and so there's total, and then there's air-conditioned part. Well, I'm using the total part and the GIS acres. Those two give you that pervious versus impervious, and that percentage. So I think it, it's a very good way of measuring that water management, how you're affecting the water management system. Parks and Recreation Administrative Costs, I think in a case like that, and I've done this in a lot of other methodologies as well, I, everybody that's affected, gets a benefit by that, uses them basically equally. So what I'm saying is, you, everybody has the opportunity to go the, to the office, and you use the administration, that sort of thing. The parks and recreation all kind of fall together, so there's passive parks, there's recreational parks, there's all kinds of parks. Everybody has to equally here. So I'm, I'm gonna calculate that part of it as one ERU per unit. Now, not all, not all assessments are gonna be equal among the different neighborhoods, but the assessment, the portion of the assessment that you get that's related to parks and recreation administrative costs will be equal on a per unit basis. The vacant commercial and residential parcels will be assessed a portion of an ERU per acre based on their de minimis benefit. So the same example is in Pelican Preserve, you know, the vacant property flow is twenty percent, so vacant commercial would receive one-fifth ERU per acre, or a twenty percent flow, I shouldn't use the one-fifth acre, really, it would be twenty percent, because I'll take their acreage times the twenty percent and add that into the total side, which I will show you an example in a minute on how we get to that point. The daily trip generation will be very small, and I know I had this discussion with just peers about that, that, yeah, people do move those places, and if they're, if they're selling them, they're gonna be driving to them on occasion. So they do impact the roads very, very diminutively? Is that a term?
Dimin.
A word? I'm asking the legal counsel, is that a legal word? Anyway, anyway, in that case, they're gonna get a very small trip generation, very, very small. And then, and as far as, they'll also receive a small ERU, a portion of an ERU per acre for the recreational amenities and common areas, since they do contribute to land value, even though they don't use them physically, there is, and it's been proven, that, you know, having an asset like that within a community does increase the value a little bit. So they do get some benefit from that. It's gonna be very small. But in order to make sure that we are following the two rules of leasability, I want to make sure that we have covered enough. And they're getting their small portion of it. Although I can prove the benefit that they're receiving from it is also small. But they are getting a benefit from it as opposed to not paying anything else. So that's how we will measure your, the vacant commercial and residential parcels. Next slide, please.
I think I followed most of that, but you gave me an adjustment when you said that different neighborhoods would be treated differently. That seems to.
Only from the water management.
Stormwater only.
Only stormwater only.
Because of the size of lots.
Because of the, yeah. That trip generation, if they're all single family, they're all getting the same trip generation.